Good evening. Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's Thursday, October 28th of 2021. Welcome everyone and let's start our meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Going at our own pace. Okay, first on the agenda is a public hearing for the boundary line adjustments that we have before us tonight. So first, this is the opportunity for anyone to come in and make any comments about this. We'll open the public hearing. I don't see any public, so we'll close the public hearing and take up this matter further down in the agenda. So next would be approval of the agenda.
One more.
One second.
Any additions or subtracts, subtractions to this?
We can, we can talk about both.
Yeah, we can put that in announcements.
Did you get my phone call message?
I did.
Would you like to add something on that or?
Yeah, you want to do that in old business?
Sure.
Okay, so William, it's okay. Howard and Jerry will add zoning to old business, a general discussion about zoning.
Okay.
It's pertaining to, okay, any further discussion on the agenda? Hopefully everybody can hear me okay, on the remote side. Okay, all those, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we'll skip over new business. We don't have anything that's precisely new tonight. And we'll go down to old business and we'll take up the boundary line adjustments with Mr. Cleary. And this is two adjustments to the lands of Stephen and Kelly Butrick and lands of adjoining property owners. So Mr. Cleary, you've come in with a new Mylar?
Yes, added to it, Madam Chairman.
And the changes you made in this?
Are just to show the continuation of the lines that appear on the other town maps, including the tax map, so that it shows the full Vermont Mountain View Properties LLC in its, see where's the north here, in its westerly boundary. So basically Tinker just went back and put in there what he should have put to begin with to show the whole parcel.
Any other changes?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
It looks to me like it's, it's what we, what we asked for is what we got here. It has all of the lines that were, the complete boundaries are there.
You need to see this, Howard? Have you seen it?
Already seen it.
Okay. So unless there's any, any further questions for Mr. Cleary, we can just go through our approval verification here. The application is now complete. Yes. We have a cover letter. If I remember correctly. And we just needed one of those. Let's see, I forget Bill, why is cover letter here twice? Forms required and forms received? Okay. And it was received. Nothing else was required, reforms. Date of initial hearing was? Is that tonight?
Again, probably the bottom of ones and the other ones.
Was that the three weeks ago or was that the first time Dave was in?
I think that was the second time.
Three weeks ago.
I made the informal presentation five or six weeks ago, maybe a little more.
I'd like to put it on there.
Okay, and date of final hearing would be tonight. And I'll have you fill in the application for the fees. And the preliminary plat meets all requirements. No. Need to fill out all boundary lines. Final plat meets all requirements. Any other comments?
And we gave Bill a digital.
Okay, great, great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the boundary line survey plat for, I don't know what the title is on it, but it's.
For the lands of Stephen and Kelly Butrick and lands of adjoining property owners.
Andy, okay. Any discussion of the motions to approve this, these boundary line adjustments? Out of three here. Okay, go for the question now. All those in favor of approving this, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it passes.
Democracy in action, yes.
The wheels move slow.
Ah, but they move well. All right. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, for your hard work, consideration and continuing devotion to the town.
Thank you, be safe.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll fill out the other form.
Thank you, Bill.
Next on the agenda was it's called compiling a list of ordinance preferences for the select board. So I went to the select board three weeks ago with this, with our list. I also mentioned that it looked like we're going to have to spend some money and maybe augment our budget to get the legal help that we would need to do some of these ordinances. I, so as soon as I mentioned that, I didn't get what I was looking for, which is their preferences. They kicked it back to us and asked us to come up with a list of preferences and put some numbers, some budget numbers to those. So that's, that's where we are. I took a closer look at what VLCT sent us for model ordinance and Bill, do you have that available? This is just for noise, but it covers a lot of stuff. And I'm wondering if we could, you know, use something like this and put a lot of the things that we're talking about in here. I mean, Bill mentioned the last time that his number one complaint is noise. We might be able to put, if we wanted to do anything more about shooting ranges or when shooting firearms can happen in the town, we could use this. Yeah.
You know, I, something that keeps, that's been coming up lately as, as an issue and a problem in the town is animals. We have a situation of a development and somebody, let's say comes in and sets up a horse barn and right, you know, right in a, in a neighborhood. We've got a situation in town now that's not going well at all. And I don't know what, if anything, you know, we could do with an ordinance to try to protect, protect it going down the road because it's, it can become a real, real issue.
So, so what are the issues involved with?
The issue is the, the order from the, the horse manure that's being piled up. I mean, I'm, I'm talking like a one acre lot, a one acre lot with four horses, a barn, a house, and, and you know, other little things on it too. In a development, we, we talked a lot about helicopters and noise and everything else, but, but what about putting four horses in the middle of your backyard up there, Gary, in, in the, in the middle of all the houses? I mean, I don't know, that's a tough one to deal with, no doubt, but, but we have, it's a serious issue, really is.
Yeah, I wonder how other towns deal with that? I mean, they limit the number?
They can do anything. I mean, they, I guess with humane society and, you know, can't do anything, but it's, but it's something without zoning that we, we certainly can't control something.
I was gonna say, it would seem zoning would be the only real way to control it. You'd say to keep horses or whatever, you'd have to have a minimum size parcel excluding the residents, right? I mean, you could, or I suppose you could do with an ordinance, say you can only have so much stock on, on so much land. I mean, most responsible people would do that, but, you know, with the ability to bring in feed, you can, you can definitely keep horses in a, you know, in an awful small area, which would lead to the problem you're talking about.
And we're just talking about large animals, right? We're not, probably wouldn't want to extend this to, you know, a number of dogs.
Dogs or anything, no. Something kick around. Kick them coops.
Yeah, just a minute, Mary Beth, the screen. So if you could scroll down, Bill, I mean, this covers radios and other sound producing devices, defects in vehicles, loudspeakers, exhaust horns, firearms, construction noise and noise in general. So even this simple ordinance, which has, looks like it's passed the test of time with municipalities and with legal help, can cover quite a bit of area. Mary Beth.
Construction, pardon me, I'm sorry. Then if you could scroll back, Bill, does it give hours on construction?
Yes.
I, I'm just, okay, now I can read it.
Noises and the explosion, demolition, alteration, or repair of building structures, properties or highways between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, except for emergencies.
I think it should be 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And certainly not any later than that, not for construction.
Construction noise, yeah. Mary Beth, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just had something to add on the livestock. So I used to work for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. I worked with farms and the required ag practices that govern farms in Vermont, which are related to water quality. And through that, I know that any farms that are small enough or backyard farms that are too small to be covered under the state's required ag practices are governed by the town. So that's an established, you know, any nuisance related to livestock is a town.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, is that you, Norm?
Yes, I was trying to, yes, who's speaking?
Ah, this is Barbara.
Barbara, I was trying to get in. I was on hold on the Zoom. Let me, so I never got let in. I'm sorry?
Stay right there. Bill's working.
But let me, let me try and log in now. Let me try to log in now.
You're in, Norm. You don't have to, you're in.
Yeah, but I wanted to win on the video.
Yeah, yeah, his, his video is not up.
He can't, he can't see that.
He's on the phone.
Okay, oh, he's on the phone. No, he's not gonna.
Yeah, but I was trying to log in and I waited for, it said, wait for the to be let in. And I waited for five or 10 minutes and I wasn't laid, let in. So that's why I called in, but now that you know I'm coming, let me just finish putting that ID number in.
Mary Beth, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I don't, I don't know more details, like the exact legal rights, but I do know that as far, at least as far as water quality, manure management in small farms and backyard farms, that is the town's responsibility and I know that that's supported throughout the state.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. I can't remember right offhand how many animals this applies to, but it's, but a handful or something. We'll, we'll have to check statute on that, right?
Yes, I think the RAPs are four horses or more, and that's just based on the volume of manure they produce. So it may actually, if there's four horses, that's kind of a, it may be a gray area between the state and the town, but you can look into it further.
Yeah. And I guess you can take that down now, Bill. We, you know, that there is, there are things we can do with, I think there's something we can write in ordinance form for grading, you know, a parcel. And it would apply, it would apply from then forward.
Right, yeah, I think we can do that.
Retractively. May even be able to do something about fill as well.
I think most towns have it that you can't bring in much fill before, without a permit. Can only bring in so many yards and you definitely can't change the contour, you know, excessively.
Hello?
And that's, Norm, we can hear you and see you.
Okay.
All right, and now that we have everyone here, we, the voting members tonight will be all of the regular members. And it would be five, and then, then Norm and Jim. Okay, so everyone's voting.
Dana's not here and Jerry's not here. I can't tell from the screen.
Yeah, I guess it's just Dana now. It's just Dana, that's right. So, sorry, Jim. You would still be a non-voting alternate tonight, but Norm with his seniority would be a voting one.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I don't know what happened, but I was logged in and it said somehow it didn't reach Barbara. And so I was.
Okay, we're good, we're good now.
Okay, thank you. I apologize again.
What, Andy, you want to roll in some of your more recent thinking about zoning now with this?
Well, I could bring that up now. I, it just became, it was something else that came, a, I brought it with me here. I was hoping Norm would be here actually. And it was called Snowstone. And it was a judgment that went on Act 250 to the Supreme Court. And what the Supreme Court came up with is the fact that it doesn't matter the size of the parcel that is being developed in a one acre town. What matters is the footprint of the developed portion. So in other words, a person could have a, a large tract of land, and as long as they don't go over point nine nine of an acre, we'd have, as a town, we have nothing we can do about it.
So Act 250 kicks in only if the footprint?
Only at the footprint, as long as this ruling is allowed to stand. Now, it's being appealed. But I, I don't, I have no idea. But as of right now, I, I do know that we, another issue that I'm a party to, a letter came down and, and pretty much Act 250 said, as long as this is in place, they're not going to, they're not going to look at anything that, that isn't, where the developed portion isn't over one acre.
Who is, who is speaking? I can't tell.
That's Andy.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
That's not, that hasn't been my understanding of when Act 250 kicks in. I mean, it's like any, any, you know, I'm not spitting anything you're saying, Andy. Just, it was always assumption that if you're a one acre town, any development
Right.
commercial or residential with five houses in a, or, I always forget what the, what it is, but
I thought I was Norm.
In five years?
Maybe in five years. Nine lots, under nine lots is not scrutinized by Act 250, I think, which is.
Ten is, ten is where, yeah, it kicks in, but then you get, then you get some, a period of years.
There's a.
To put the houses up. Norm, is that, did you hear what Andy just reported out?
Only portions of it. And I will tell you, I have never done any Act 250 work, so I'm probably not a very good person to look to on this one. I just never came across my desk.
Jim, have you had any experience?
Uh, no, I'm in a similar situation to Norm. I, Act 250 was something that was handled by a board that was not part of the select board and we, about the only thing that we had to deal with was the results of whatever they did.
Yeah, so this is not unheard of. I think recently the Supreme Court has taken some, has narrowed its views on what it considers this and also section 248, which is energy.
My point, my point here is could, should we ask the select board in light of this, to review their decision to allow us to do some work on zoning? Should, you know, we've, in, in my view, at any rate, from, and from what I've traditionally understood, what I've traditionally always thought of Act 250, if, if you had an acre and a tenth parcel and you wanted to do any development on it, you needed to go through Act 250, that the footprint didn't matter. But now that, now if it's under one acre, the footprint matters. So you can have, in fact, I think on this case here, it's, it's something less than an acre on 175 acre parcel. In light of that, I'm just asking whether we, we couldn't ask the select board if they, if, you know, if they feel it that a lot more of our land would become developable more readily now in light of this decision than, than it was before. And so in that case, they might be more amenable to thinking about some limited zoning.
Um, can I add something really quickly? I don't know if it's relevant or not, but my company is working on this, or this is our client. So I just wanted to disclose, since we're talking about it, you know, the ethics, I don't know, you know, I just thought I should let you guys know.
Yes, thank you, Mary Beth.
Sure.
Is this in the Rutland area?
Um, no, um, I'm also, I'm not sure what I, I don't think that I should say anything because I'm not sure what I am allowed to say from my employer standpoint or with the planning commission. So I probably shouldn't be involved in the discussion at all.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
I have a, I have a question, Barbara.
Yeah.
Um. Andy, I came in on the end. This is a Supreme Court decision or a Act 250 District Commission decision?
Act 250 jurisdictional opinion, Supreme Court on appeal from Superior Court Environmental Division.
When, when was it decided?
On December term 2020, and it was decided on September 3rd, I believe.
Of this year?
Yes.
Well, and Jim, you, you served on the select board. I think your comments would be helpful here. My understanding is, you know, there is a bias or a reluctance is probably a better word to adopt zoning. So if we're going to go, if the planning commission decides to go, it, it needs to be very well prepared and very documented. And the first question ought, may want to be, you know, well, let me back up. Andy, when you chaired, how long did you chair the planning commission?
I truly don't remember.
All right, quite a few years?
Well, I think it was a few.
And you were on it sometime before that when zoning was considered and turned down?
It was, as, as Jim remembers this a little differently than I do. As I remember, we sent it to the select board and, and it just died. But it was right after I got on and I don't.
Well, I, I just think between you and Jim and Barbara, I think we shouldn't act hastily, but we should develop a very careful approach because it's a very sensitive area. And I don't know whether we can get an opinion from our council as to, if that's the first step and how this impacts us or how he reads it, or whether we should ask the select board to do it. But I think it's a process. I don't think it's a ten minute presentation. And Jim, that's just my feeling. I, I think we have to be very thorough about it and careful.
I think we, I think the only first step is for us to ask the select board again. And, and, and if we can explore it, because if they don't want it explored at all, then and, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it. That's, that is just how it will be.
And this is on appeal?
It's, it's a Supreme Court decision or it's, again?
It was a Supreme Court decision, yes.
So it's not on appeal? It's been decided?
No, it is being appealed now.
Oh.
It is a Supreme Court decision that's come down, but it is, it is going to be appealed.
No, no, I'm confused. It's a Supreme Court decision 2020.
Right.
And you say it's going to be appealed?
Yes.
To where?
Back to the Supreme Court again.
It's, it's on for rehearing?
Apparently, yes.
All right. Let, let me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, I, if you could look it up, I, I'm not, that part of it, I don't know. It's, it's, I found it quite easily.
Well.
Just by going on Supreme Court and just looking on September 3rd. And that, and the, and the, the case is, is called Snowstone.
Andy, could you send it to me? I'm going to be away. I'm leaving tomorrow for four or five days, I think, if my plane's not grounded, because it's very stormy around the DC area. But if you could email it to me, then I'll take.
What I'll do is I'll email you the
The citation?
Find it.
You, give me the name and the case number. You, give me the name and the case number and that, and then I can e- more easily find it and take a look. I have to be very careful. Everybody knows I'm retired. Um, I'm not giving legal advice per se. Um, so it's really just a matter of sort of helping Andy. I have no insurance and I wouldn't, I, you know, we have a town attorney, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm real comfortable waiting, you know, three weeks to go to our next meeting, so everybody has a chance to think about this and decide whether we want to go to the select board again.
I think we can afford that time if it's going, if it's going to be reheard anyway. I mean, I don't think.
I don't think it's, I think, yeah, I don't think it's gonna change.
That may be true, too.
And I, I really don't want to, I don't, I don't want us to go to the, the select board and and have them think that we're just constantly knocking on their door about the same thing. So I'd really like everybody to look at this and and decide if they're, we're real comfortable or whether we just accept the fact that the, that the select board doesn't want to review zoning and and if that's the case, then that's fine, too.
I, I have a.
In the, I'm, Jim, go ahead.
Yes, so I have a feeling that what the select board is going to say in this particular case is uh you come back to us after the appeal is over and there's still no more uncertainties about this decision. And I think if we do that before that's done, uh, they're gonna tell us uh, they're just wait. That's my feeling.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm thinking that um in the next three weeks, I can get the town attorney to look at the ruling, it's going to court ruling, and maybe just interpret that for us. So we have that for our next meeting. And that may help us decide where we want to go from there.
The, the only thing that that I would argue against waiting for the appeal can be the fact that the Act two fifty board is, is now said they're not going to look at anything that's under a, under an acre footprint. So that means that any development that goes on is almost certainly going to be allowed to stand. And it's, it's whether or not we all feel and and we can convince the select board that that in fact is a, is, is something that should be dealt with.
Right.
And and I, it's obviously my opinion that, that it is something that needs to be dealt with, but I realize that that might not be the majority's opinion, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm glad everybody can just think about this and, you know, we're, we're just uh wait to see what happens and bring it up again the next meeting.
Hey, Norm, go ahead.
I would suggest, Andy, that you send that uh, and maybe just give it to Bill. He can scan it and send it to everybody as an attachment. Um, because some of the people won't know how to look it up. Just so everybody has the same thing and we can talk about it more intel, more completely because we're working from the same text um at the next meeting. And I think um if it in fact is back before the Supreme Court on a motion to rehear, it may come up rather quickly. Um, but it's not final then. Um, uh, but I think everybody should know exactly what it says, uh, exactly what the circumstances are, and we can talk more intelligently. And if the chair thinks we ought to get an opinion at this point from the town attorney, I think we ought to follow her instincts.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be fairly simple for um someone to take a look at that and just tell us what it means. Um.
But we all should, we all should have it. It's, you know, it, it's important, in in my, my opinion. Uh, it's an important subject. And if this, if this is the linchpin uh as to whether we go forward or not, I think it's in the interest of everybody on the, on our commission to have a copy of what we're working with. So I think if Bill can, if Bill can scan it and send it, or just send it as an email attachment to everybody or send it for the next meeting, whatever's is best. Uh, how long is the opinion, Andy? How many pages?
Hmm, fourteen.
Right. Well, the sooner we get it out, the better, you know, even for people like me, a fourteen page opinion takes some time to digest on a particularly difficult subject. So I would hope Bill could get it out within the next week. Everybody's got a couple of weeks to deal with it and and digest it, we get, and then come back. Uh, and in the meantime, Barbara can get some guidance from her town attorney and uh I, I, I think Jim's on the right track. Thank you. I've said enough.
Okay.
Great.
Maybe it's good you didn't see the email that I was, I, I sent your way after your phone message. Um, it was, is a little flippant uh about the, the next select board meeting, we're going to be bringing up the Conservation Commission again, but that we, that will be the meeting Mary Beth and I go to for that. So maybe it's not the best time to. I kind of joked that, oh, let's just put them both in there again and see, like we did the first time.
I just want to start the ball rolling on this thing and and just let it, you know, go where it may.
Okay.
Did you say you sent me uh an email?
No.
Jesus.
I'm sorry, was you talking, was Norman talking?
Norm, are you talking to us?
Yes, yes.
Oh, no, no. I sent the email to Andy, Norm.
Oh, that was, that you said was rather flip?
Yeah.
I could understand you'd be rather flipped to me, but Andy deserves more.
I know, really?
Andy deserves more respect. Okay.
Okay, so back to the ordinances, so we'll and push, put zoning aside and maybe even some of the, our discussions about maybe looking at fill limitations, I don't know. I think maybe we take these in chunks, maybe we do go to the select board and say, these are our top three choices uh for the next year. Or until the end of the next fiscal year, whatever we decide. So what would be on that list? We've got, we've mentioned noise, we've mentioned um livestock.
Little noise and animals, right?
Uh-huh.
Animals or livestock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, do we want to limit it to livestock? What about dogs? If someone had fifteen dogs, would that be, it seems like in excess and there's certainly.
We have a dog.
Yeah, is that sound? Is that um?
We have one already that does this out, so.
So it looks like we've got dogs covered, Sherman.
Under, under the uh dog ordinance?
Yes, there is a dog ordinance.
Okay.
An existing one. Um, last time we talked about um a generic building permit and requiring developers to meet with us, the planning commission. Maybe seeing if we could draft something up along those lines. We've always got the helipad airstrips and hot air balloons, but we're, we're still out in front on that one and, you know, I wouldn't be sorry if we just waited and see if anyone else did anything on that first. Uh, paramilitary training facilities, shooting ranges.
To me, that's a, the paramilitary and shooting ranges should be near the top. Certainly should be on the list, whether it's on the top, doesn't, yeah, may not make any difference, but we would be out in advance, ahead of the curve there as well, Barbara.
Yes. But I think our Bill, do you know for, we don't really have a noise ordinance. So, okay. So we don't regulate shooting or target practicing or any of that stuff right now? Okay, so we got that. We've got um generic noise. We want to do something with that. We've got the livestock. We got maybe um building permits, developers.
Wouldn't a shooting range or a paramilitary training facility need more than an acre? Which therefore would have Act two fifty, would be scrutinized by Act two fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty hard to shoot on a half an acre.
Right.
You know what I mean, or three quarters even.
Yeah.
It would require so much more land. It just seems like it's gonna be a real cumbersome. We've got the noise ordinance that covers firearms. And I don't see, it just seems to me like.
I don't think we have a noise ordinance.
If we got a noise ordinance, then we could stay away from the shooting range part, which could trigger Second Amendment people could, whereas if, if we're regulating noise or regulating noise, regardless of where it comes from, so.
It's a good point, Jerry, because, you know, what, what happened in Politt, I mean, that's, they're fully zoned there. So, you know, it's, it's, Act two fifty would not kick in unless it was ten acres.
Right, but in this case, it would because we're one acre, right?
I think so.
Well, I thi- I think that's.
Ruling stood.
If it's for commercial purposes, wha- what they also did in Politt, though, was call it educational. And then they put it uh, you know, next door to a school. Uh, or pretty close to the school there. Norm?
Well, I was just thinking about uh this new potential limitation uh visa for Jerry's comments. Um, if the shooting range, what is the shoot, what is the footprint of a shooting range? I mean, I, I've never been on one. I don't know. I mean, is it the target area? I mean, if you're shooting from under a certain distance, as opposed to a greater distance, does that increase the footprint? Um, I think there's some questions there.
Yeah, and 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 we can hash these out. Um, just trying to get a sense of when I should go back to the select board with. You know, this is our list. This is what we think are priorities. So um if we think we can put shooting ranges in with noise, then we just have three here. The noise, the livestock, and maybe building permits and having developers talk to us more.
I would think if, if, if the shooting range and the noise ordinance were integrated, we might have a better chance of getting some action than just singling it out. Uh, and, and having it in a sense less controversial. Uh, I say in a sense, and I stress that. Um, but that make shooting range, you know, noise ordinance, including shooting ranges, uh, and if we can think of another outstanding example. Um, uh, so that it's not pinpointing that particular issue.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can work out those details, Norm.
Mm-hmm.
Anything, uh, Sherman, Mary Beth, any other ideas you want to push for right now?
The, the first thing that I did, this is Jim speaking, was once, I went through the, the total list. Um, and I came up with, uh, I believe it's four or at least three that are uh probably not gonna, we're not gonna want to spend any time on. And one of them is, is the first one was driving with uh an operating portable electric, electronic devices. And it's my understanding that this is covered by state law. Our constables and our police force are working off a state law rather than um.
Driving.
An ordinance, I believe.
We have the driving while using an ordinance to prevent that, to allow our police department to write tickets and we retain the fine. If we didn't have an ordinance, they write a ticket, the fine goes to the state. So we have it, so we get the fine. That's why it's there.
Did you hear that, Jim?
Uh, I heard most of it. So if, if, if there's a reason why it has to be in place, well, then that makes sense. I, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, it's for our benefit.
It's gonna be done anyway. This way we get the fine money.
Right. That, the next one that I'm pretty certain um, is the flood hazard um ordinance. And we're pretty much um left at the mercy of the mapping results every time they come in and review the map. Um, elevations and changes in the riverbed and all that kind of thing. So I wouldn't be uh very uh reluctant, wouldn't be very much of a hurry to um make any changes to that one because uh there's a lot of federal implications in that, that we don't have any control over anyway. So, that's, that's me, just me speaking. And there is one that we, I think we really should pay attention to. Isn't it, and that's the open burning ordinance. In spite of uh being in place for uh, I'm talking about the, the state law now that the banned open burning, except by uh permit from a fire warden. Um, there's a lot of it going on in various parts of the town uh where permits aren't issued. So I think we really should take a thorough look at that one and uh.
We had some question, excuse me, Jim, we had some question, Bill, about whether that was still on the books?
It is, yes. It's still an active ordinance. So the, the various committees, like the fire committee is going, they're gonna take a look at like the fire line ordinance, the uh open burning, fire hydrant, they're gonna, each of the committees was wanting to be taking a look at the active ordinances that apply to their realm.
Okay, so they'll be, we should let them do that.
Right, so the ones like for, that would apply, like we talked about the flood hazard one, that would be obviously in the subdivision one, it would be appropriate for us to take on here. The, you know, other ones, like streets and sidewalks, you are highway, you know, but the, the, the individual committees are gonna take on the ones that align with their, with their group.
And that's, that's their assignment?
Yeah.
Right now, okay. Did you hear that, Jim?
I, I, I caught most of it. Uh, one of the things that goes on in the spring and about this time of year is people get the idea that they can burn leaves. And there's nothing more obnoxious than burning wet leaves. And um, so that's what made me think of it.
That would be covered under the ordinance, the permit?
It is not allowed, yeah, it's.
Okay, any other comments, Tim?
Well, the only other one that I see, and I think it probably should remain, was the public assembly ordinance. This particular ordinance was drafted back when I was on the select board uh as a hedge towards uh something similar to a reggae festival that was supposed to take place up in the northern part of town. I don't think it ever did, but um that may be one of, we, we may want to review that uh pretty closely to be sure that we're covered. Um, there's a lot of things going on in the country that uh might generate some of this stuff. Um, if it does, we, the town needs to be covered.
Mm-hmm, okay. Bill, is there a committee that oversees something like that?
Nobody has one there, or it's, we haven't, we haven't closed any events in a while, so I, I know what he's talking about, yeah, that was, it never to get triggered for that, but, yeah.
It's kind of a washed down version that we have, or?
No, it just, like Jim was saying, there was an event that was planned and this was put in place. No, it just, like Jim was saying, there was an event that was planned and this was put in place to. Give it some guidelines and the event never happened, but we haven't come close. I think it's a five hundred person or more event and we just haven't.
That rings a bell.
We haven't come close to it yet. So I, I mean, it's, it's a, one we certainly can look at, but I don't know if it's a, a higher up on the list one.
They came, they came here to the planning commission, the event planner.
Yeah.
Remember that, Howard? They came here. The event planner came here to the planning commission. I don't know if you remember that.
Well, I guess, yeah, we could look at it and make sure it's not like specific to that event. Okay. We could take a look at it anyway.
The other one is a public nuisance ordinance. And, uh, that's, uh, right on the bottom of that first page. Um, I think we just may wanna review some of these to be, be certain that they're up to date. I'm not recommending that we, uh, do away with them or anything. It's just reveal. Uh, to be sure they're complying when, uh, in today's world and not let the town. Left holding the bag.
Okay. Anybody else have any input? Right now, we've got the three top runners. The noise, which would include shooting, um, target shooting and such. What we decide to add to that. Um, we have, uh, livestock limitations. Building permits, developers, and then, um, we'll ask, we can review the public assembly. And the public nuisance ordinances.
Barbara?
Yeah.
Um, so just looking at some of the ones that are on the website, um, and you realize there, so there's an ATV. Ordinance, and I think it's, um. Focused on noise, but it does talk about some other things. Um, and it looks like it might be. Applicable to other things, like we might use it as a model. Um, it's very short, but use a structure as a model for some of the other things, like the shooting ranges and. Um.
Yep, okay, maybe combine some things.
Right, or maybe make it not specifically ATV, but combine that with other nuisance.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, hopefully there's some safety measures in there too.
Hmm.
Reasons for it.
Yeah, it talks about sound, public nuisance, like being, you know, it's, uh, talking about. The sound level when measured within residences. Um, so, you know, eighty-five decibels with it, within ten feet of a property line. So you might be able to use that for, um, that kind of threshold. I don't know where it came from, but. Um.
Okay.
And then I know it was, so we've talked before about the permit tracking ordinance. That's the one, um. The, I forgot what we called it, but the, the building permit that's not really a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that might be one where we could start with what we have and we might be able to add. Um, to that, to address other things that might otherwise be in zoning.
Right, right. Or what we've been talking about with the building and the developers.
Mm-hmm. Right, and we could cover there to the fill and impacts to other adjoining properties. Related to that.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we can add that to the review list. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so by consensus, we'll just go with that list?
Could you go over it again? We seem to bounce around. I just want the minutes to be clear.
Okay, so there's two categories. Um, what we think at this point would be new ordinances. Um, would be a noise one, um, something, um, regulating livestock, number of livestock. And, um, building permits, uh, beefing that up and. Um, adding some requirements that developers meet with the planning commission. And then we, the other second category is reviewing some of the ordinances we already, that are already on the books. Public assembly, public nuisance, uh, the ATV ordinance and permit tracking.
And what's the last one?
Uh, it's called permit tracking.
Permit tracking?
Yeah.
That's the one we talked about it a couple of meetings ago, I think, um.
I see it now, yeah.
Okay, just it, how it's used because we don't have zoning. Um, to help people building, um, something in town. To be aware of any other permits. So to notify the town what they're building and then we would help them. Figure out what else they might need to do.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll find out more when we dig into it. Um, so. Everybody's got the, got the list? In agreeable?
Yeah.
We'll go with the Zoom folks?
Yep. I'm fine.
Me too. Good.
Okay. Let's, um. Let's move on in the agenda tonight. Um. I think we can finalize the rules of procedure tonight. Because we just have, we've agreed to everything except, um, we, we modified a few things. You've got your copies, um, under C, organization number three. Um, Norm has reworded that, uh, so that the last couple of sentences. Um, have been changed. Should a regular member arrive at the meeting while an alternate member is serving? The alternate member shall continue to serve until the, the pending business, the pending business is concluded. And shall vote on such pending business if appropriate. The regular member shall then assume their seat on the commission and the minutes shall reflect such change. So that's that one. And then the only other change that we needed to make. Um, is F, public participation, and then D, the. Calling in the constable, I think it was something like that originally. So now it reads, order law enforcement to remove disorderly person or persons from the meeting.
Can we order law enforcement to do that, or do we say request law enforcement?
I think it went, if.
They're not in the building.
Yeah, and if, if this situation arose, I think it probably rises to a level of an order. Yeah? Any other comments? Are we ready to finalize this?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
Move to adopt the Rutland Town Planning Commission Rules of Procedure as amended.
A second.
Okay, thanks, folks. Further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the rules, procedure as amended this evening? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, do you need all of our signatures on that, Bill?
That's up to you guys.
Do you, do you want us to sign?
I, I will, um, let me get, let me get a clean copy and then we'll, we'll sign that and. So it can be simple. I'll show them the date and the next meeting you can sign it and. It'll all be filled in.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Okay. Um, I've got down here, um, pocket park update. Let's see, the survey is done. And, um, hope to have, hope to set up some meetings between the town and Green Mountain Power. Um, on that survey and what might be the next steps for. Um, deciding what we could do with that parcel of land that we're looking at. Um, whether it's some sort of an easement or purchase, whatever that might be.
On Green Mountain?
Green Mountain Power owns most of it. The town owns parts of it, like old Route Four cuts through the parcel. And of course, there's the right of way along Simons Avenue. Um, speaking of that, uh, I, I checked with Byron because one of the stakeholders mentioned. That, you know, maybe we wanna make this park accessible to. The size of groups, like a family reunion or something like that. So, you know, so far, we've added four spots in the north end. And squeezing in a total of four, the south end where the parking is right now. So that's just eight. Wouldn't handle much of an event, family, even a family event. So I asked Byron, um. How we could add additional spots? And he came up with, if, came up with a couple alternatives. Um, the first one would be to use all of, or most of the towns right away. Along the south end of Simons. From like the tunnel to Business Route Four, that part of Simons. And put in, um, parallel parking there. And he thought that could add, um, at least, I think it was eight more. And another alternative was to make that stretch one way and put in diagonal parking. And he thought that could be like twenty or so spots. So.
I think we gotta walk this.
Not to make it one way.
Or, uh, having to encourage them to have it at Dewey Hill.
Right, right.
I'm not sure that site's gonna really be appropriate for that kind of event.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at what, two picnic tables?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing too, if, if that's, comes to that, that would encourage people to likely just start parking at Johnson Energy, which would not be a good thing.
Yeah, and, and I do need to speak to Johnson Energy too, and just alert them to what's going on here.
So whenever we do that, there probably should be signs there that say. Parking, you know, at the, at the entrance to the paths or whatever, it says. You, you, you know, do not park across the street because that's private property and.
Right, right. Yep, so true. And, you know, I, I don't know if. Putting more parking along Simons, that side of Simons is going to make the, the area more safe. I mean, it would probably. You'd probably want to cut down even more vegetation, which is in, in the plan now, in the design. To, to especially get the invasives out of there and clear it out and make it a safer. Place to go, or, or at least a place where the police can see better what's going on. Even though it's a steep drop off down to the river, they'll never be able to see down the bottom.
So, I, I have a question. I, I don't have a good feel for the number of people. That would be, that, that the pocket park can accommodate. Uh, and I, I get the impression that if we have all those parking spots, we may overrun. The space we have for people to, to do whatever they do there.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, is there a concern with that, or is it just no problem?
Um, I, I just asked Byron for all of the scenarios he could think of.
No, I just meant, I, I'm sorry, I just meant the number of people. Oh, i- is there a, is there a limit as to how many people? Uh, can comfortably utilize the pocket park?
Well, I don't have a number in my head. I mean, there could be some people that are fishing. There could be some people just walking along the shore. There could be people walking. We've got several trails in the design right now. And there could, there's the, the overlook, which has an overlook and a couple of picnic tables right now. So I don't know how many people that is. Um, it's probably true, we don't need twenty or more parking spots. Um, there isn't that much room. But, you know, I would guess, you know. It could fill up with, I don't know, twenty people?
If there's eight parking places and that seems like enough at this point, couldn't it be addressed if there starts to be a problem?
That, further down the road, exactly.
I mean, it just seems like if it's a small park, eight spaces is probably pretty darn close to accurate.
Mm-hmm.
It's just something for us to keep in mind as we.
Let's get it built.
Yeah.
And that the park of spaces are necessary, then.
You're gonna try to put parking along the road, you're gonna take away a lot of the property. That's a steep bank going down.
It is a steep bank. It is, yeah.
Leave that alone. Leave the road as is.
Yeah. Okay, Norm.
Uh, my, my concern is that. The more you increase the number of parking spaces. The more potential to really make this. Overcrowded and destroy, uh, some of the attributes of it that. Um. Looking for a word. Destroy some of the tranquility and peacefulness of it. I mean, if you have twenty parking spaces. You know, that's a lot of people. Um. And, you know, some people, it just doesn't go with my own concept of what this is, which is a beautiful pastoral. Attraction. Uh, and not an event center. And.
Yeah. Yeah, that's only two acres large.
Yeah, and, um. I, I think, I don't know, it was Andy or Jerry said, let's get it built and then decide how far we go with it. I think that's really the best thing. Not getting too complicated. Leave it where it is now. I mean, there may be some questions of whether we can get all the funding later on that we would need now to do it, but. Uh, I, I think the, the beauty of this is. It's serenity in the middle of a highway. And, um, I think we really wanna preserve that and improve it as opposed to overrun it.
Any other comments? That, I mean, that's about where we're at. I'm still talking to the history folks about. Best ways to do the interpretive part of this, you know, what, how that will be done. And I think we've talked about this, you know, physical things right there at the park. In addition to maybe some online, uh, resources. Uh, so that, uh, you could either go up. Uh, with your phone and maybe access information or not even have to go visit the park. You could, you could just. Uh, go onto a computer and learn all sorts of things about the history of the area. So we're still working through that and we'll have a couple, one or two public meetings. To share all these ideas and, and, and see what the public thinks. And then somehow put that all together for the select board to make the final decision. And again, this is just a preliminary design. And, you know, hopefully we'll come up with what we. What we need to go to the next step, which is to write the next grant, to get a full design done on this. Any questions?
No.
On, I guess.
Okay. Howard says to move on.
Yep.
That brings us down to announcements and news. Uh, got a couple things there. We've got written down the Conservation Commission. Mary Beth can bring us up to date on that. And then Howard has a few comments about, you know, most of you are here, last time when we talked about the Velco and the Thomas property situation with renaming parts of the parcel. But Mary Beth, we'll start with you. We're going to be going to the select board on the 9th. And what are we going to be asking?
Sure. So on the 9th, we're going to see if there are any remaining questions, address any questions they had before, and just request that they vote on it one way or the other, whether we should move forward and try to put it on the ballot, because that would give us enough time to get the word out to the town of what it exactly it is. And be informed well enough to be able to vote on it until meeting day, or whether they don't want to move forward for sure, and we'll drop it and try to do some of the things just with the Planning Commission.
In the meantime, Mary Beth, you have been meeting with the Recreation Committee?
Yes, so I wanted to give you an update on that also. Last Tuesday, I met with the Recreation Committee at the invitation of Mike Rowe. So not representing the Planning Commission, but this is, he invited me, Andy McMillan, who's been the Disc Golf and Mountain Biking, you know, volunteer resident. And Tom Horrocks, who has been promoting the mountain bike. And he wasn't able to make the committee meeting, but Jay Rosenbaum, who owns a mountain bike design company and provided the, he came up with the design for Northwood Park for the mountain bike trails and would do the construction. He was, he was present at the meeting and Andy and I. And we didn't say much. It was mostly Mike, but we answered some questions. It was Sharon on the select board and Joe and Mike are the three. I don't know if they're the only three members of the Rec Committee, but that's who was there at the meeting. And what we were focusing on is we wrote a letter of interest for the grant for the improvements to Northwood Park that I've already told you guys about and the select board already approved, applying for the grant. But Mike and the rest of us were going to the Recreation Committee to see if the town would be able to fund those improvements anyway, through town funds. So Mike suggested using the capital improvements account and using the, you know, because we have the ARPA funds to cover some of the things that would normally be paid for from the capital improvements. And then he went into his budget and when he has excess budget from the recreation, excess money from the recreation budget, it goes back to the Capital Improvements Fund. So the Recreation Committee as a whole was supportive of bringing it to the full select board. But they asked us to develop some of the items that we're proposing in more detail for them. So like, we had included in the grant hiking nature trails that would be a little easier to access than doing the full loop that's there right now, the two mile loop. Having trails closer to the parking area that would be easier for children and elderly people with mobility issues to still experience some of the trails, but without walking up and down the steep hill. So just in the next few days, we're coming up with a proposal that's a little more detailed and where exactly we'd like to, to put that. So they can, the whole select board can review before the next meeting. So if anyone wants to help with that, I'm going to be working on it this weekend. So feel free to reach out if you have any ideas. May go out just with my family and hike around and try to GPS exact trail locations. I can put them on a map. So if that's interesting to anybody, welcome to join me. Then the other, so there's the mountain bike trails, the nature trails, which would also involve putting up signs showing the location of the trails. So right now, there's a sign showing the location of the Disc Golf course, but if we could have a similar sign at the, at each of the entrances to the main loop and showing the trail locations that might get, help more people find it and use it. Yeah, so they're, the Rec Committee was supportive of that. And we're also going to be bringing that at the November 9th meeting to the select board and Sharon, one of the Rec Committee members, recommended that we invite people in town who would like to see these improvements happen. So mountain bike, mountain bikers, people that go hiking, to invite them to the select board meeting to show the whole group that their support. So we, we agreed that we would help with that, Mike and Andy and I. So, so there may be some people at the November 9th meeting, there's kind of a lot going on.
Yeah, so we'll be asking about putting it on the ballot and them spending some money in the next fiscal year?
Right, so it'll be interesting to try to make the distinction between the two different different things. Because Mike really wants to get, you know, we have the momentum going, you know, the support from the grant, so he wanted to get a commitment from them sooner rather than later. So I don't know, it may be worth pushing it back again, our Conservation Commission discussion, but I'm a little bit hesitant just because, you know, Thanksgiving and just the holidays in general are coming up. So I don't know what, if you, what you guys think on the timing, or maybe we should just stick with the November 9th?
Well, I think we mostly determine whether you've got everything pulled together for it. On Mike's side and getting interested people there. There is a meeting on the 23rd, which is the week of Thanksgiving, but a couple of days before.
Okay, well, Mike's definitely going to bring, bring that piece to them at November 9th, but I'm wondering whether we should wait on the Conservation Commission piece. I don't know. Or if we just should just get it over with at the same meeting.
Anybody have any words of wisdom?
Right.
Well, why don't you and I talk about that, Mary Beth?
Okay.
Offline.
Sure.
And yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any difference for the select board, whether it was done together or separately, as far as getting it on the agenda anyway.
Right. I think it would be like last time, it would be during the Planning Commission update, that we would have the discussion.
About the ballot issue, yeah. But Mike will probably do the rest of it.
In his room. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and then as for the trail, the Velemon Trail, nothing has really happened since our last meeting, but I'll keep you up to date on, on that, the trail from Killington to Rutland. It's more of a longer term project.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Howard, over to you and Velco. What do we need to know about that?
We recall, Velco was asking to have a survey plat with the three different parcels labeled. Parcel, parcel A, B, and C, or one, two, and three, whatever it was. Thomas, as you know, they're, they're working to sell the farm and subdivide and so forth. So they're getting into a real issue with the number of survey subdivisions that they can have in a, in a five-year period. And what, what we did with Velco up at the, up at their substation, we basically, that subdivision had, had three lots for them. And really, it was really nothing more than a boundary line adjustment. And, you know, after what we saw with Kevin Brown gave for us McKinley Avenue project, they're really getting hung up on this. And right now, the attorneys are looking into it. And it sounds to me like they're going to try to perhaps undo that if they can, saying that originally, when the, when the Reserve Center came, the Corps of Engineers came, they created a four-lot subdivision. There was four lots there. And now we, we turned around and created another, I almost want to say three-lot subdivision. And really, all we did was, was move some boundary lines. You know, we didn't create any new lots. There's no new, no new building lots created. And, and I had a meeting today with somebody and they're, they're spinning their wheels, hoping that they can come to our next meeting in three weeks and have something for us. I don't know what it'll be, but, but the feeling is that really, was that a subdivision that we, you know, we approved for Velco, or should it have been a boundary line adjustment?
Okay, so we're in the middle of this now, and we, we made that decision because they, they were going to be using more of the water sewer services. They were expanding, they're building enough that.
And that was peanuts too. I mean, this is, this is not a full-time offer. I mean, this was just.
So why does this, why does this influence what they need, what Velco needs from Thomas's right now?
Well, Velco would still like to have the labels put on, but, but Thomas is doing everything they can to keep the number of subdivisions down. And then the feeling is now that that maybe we've created something there that's, that shouldn't have been created. There should have been a boundary line adjustment. I don't know, but they're, I know Jim Goss, I think, is on board with Thomas now. And I know Tim Martin came in, he works with Velco. And he said he's going to get together with Jim and they're going to, they're going to be spinning their wheels. I guess we just got to sit back and wait to see what happens with, with the, you know, even when they'll, they'll come up with something. They like to close on this because Velco needs to get to work.
So that's the crux of it. This is holding up the closing that we approved like six months ago.
It's holding up their construction. They need to expand and get out into this new land and get going, and they can't. They're, they're held up with that, so. They're anxious to get going. So we'll see, you know, maybe we will learn something from this and see what, what a, if that's the case, if this feeling is that it should have been, only been a boundary line adjustment, because no, no, no lots were created.
Well, usually we're not running up against the situation where they're subdividing, you know, so many lots.
They have five, five subdivisions in five, in five years. And they're struggling because of, you know, they've already had a couple of things that went on at the farm for a survey.
Solar affect them as far as the subdivision, what they did there? Maybe, I don't remember.
Didn't have.
It's, it's the total of subdivisions that they basically done, and I want to say in Rutland County, wherever they've done a subdivision, it goes against them. So. And that's, I think that's, that's what's holding it up right now is, is the subdivision issue. Because whatever they do, they want to make sure they can get it down to the lowest number they possibly can, you know, legally.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know, that's, that's too bad. I mean, I don't want us to be put in a position of changing a position and changing precedent. Because they have a situation where they're trying to sell so many lots right now. Norm?
I just have a couple of questions. First, could you refresh my recollection? Procedurally, where does this stand? Did we approve this already?
Yes, we approved it as a subdivision.
As a subdivision. Do we have the authority under the subdivision statute to revoke that? Or how would we change it, amend it, whatever, if we're comfortable with the new proposal? We need to find out whether we have authority to do that. I understood that we're just going to relabel the lots that already existed. But maybe I'm confused. I don't have the maps. But if we have approved something, and I, I think that was, what you were saying, Barbara, is do we have the authority to undo it?
Yeah, that's something we need to, to look at and, and just hopefully clarify for you. I mean, they don't want this additional subdivision now. The Thomases don't want it on their record, if you will.
When Velco first, when Velco first came and approached us on this, they were asking for a boundary line adjustment because they kept saying, well, we're just going to move some property lines. And but, but along the way, we felt, well, I guess we, this maybe got to be a subdivision. So it went on as a subdivision. And now, after what Kevin Brown just did with McKinley, when he said you didn't create any more building, you didn't create any more lots, so it's a boundary line adjustment. So isn't this a similar?
Yeah, but it was, it was the public services part that, that we used to determine that.
Well, they're, you know, nothing more we can do. They're, they're digging into it. And I expect at some point, they're going to be back to talk to us and we, nothing we can do.
I think, Norm, I think to your question, I think the relabeling of the lots is an absolute totally different. Just, you know what I mean? That's a different, that's different from the subdivision thing altogether. Velco wants to relabel, the Thomases want to possibly back, back up. And so it's two different things.
Okay, but it's the backing up that confuses me.
Yeah, yeah, I think all of us.
Yeah, we don't often get, get put in that situation. Okay, Howard, thanks. Maybe in three weeks, you said?
That's what they're hoping. That's what I was told this morning. Well, we got three weeks. We'll see if we can get something together and if they can get a new survey plat together, like they originally talked of to bring in to see if they can.
In the meantime, we'll do our homework too and, and I don't know, maybe even have to run this by Kevin Brown.
Oh, you know, it might not be a bad idea because he, after what he did for us on McKinley, if you looked at this, well, again, it was the.
Okay.
I appreciate you driving it up. Anyways, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Well, it may be that we have a right, maybe have a right to amend a permit as opposed to revoking it. And that may be, you know, we just have to check. It's another possibility. As I sit here and float ideas.
It might be a possibility, Norm, because the boundary line adjustment is so vague. You know? If I can get my drift.
That's an ordinance we need to get squared away as our.
Yeah, that's going to take a few meetings. Okay. Any other announcements, news? Okay, let's take a look at the minutes and from October 7th. It looks pretty good to me.
I'll make a motion to approve them as written.
Just kidding. Okay, there's a motion on the floor in a second to approve as written.
I had a couple of questions, as you might expect. May I speak, Barbara?
Uh huh.
Okay, under new business number two. Oh, okay. Uh, under new business number two, um. An article is being written for the circle and a more direct link would be easier to write. That didn't make sense to me.
Well, that was, that was what I said. It's kind of paraphrasing um the concerns I wrote, I brought up. And then Bill said, you know, it is, it is pretty simple, the way it is.
Okay, that just wasn't clear to me. Um, in old business paragraph three, uh, second line where it says parcels sizes, should that be parcels apostrophe? Or is it? Or is it, okay, just to leave it plural? I'm not sure what was meant there.
Yes, we should put an apostrophe in there after the S.
Okay.
Anything else, Norm?
Uh, yeah. I'm reading. Um, it wasn't clear to me. It says number five, the applications, the application was reviewed and the additional requirement of the three lines were added. Um, three new lines, three, I'm not sure what, it's just not clear. I think I know but it might not be clear to somebody else.
Yeah, if you go up to four, you can see what the three lines are.
Okay. Um, next page. Um. Old business number two, second sentence, ultimately a small change was proposed and implemented or is adopted the better word, or added than implemented.
Hmm. They're all the same.
All right.
Can I make another motion?
Let me, I've got a couple more, I'm sure. On page three at the top. Um, the property owner, is that, Mr. Burgess said the property owner, is that owners plural? The McLaughlins? Plural again.
The property owners can be, can be two people, can be couples, can be two partners.
I just wondered if it should be property owner, singular or owners plural? And then where he's got McLaughlins, it's apostrophe S if it's plural. And then the words own the property seems to be duplicated unnecessarily. The property owners, the McLaughlins own the property. If it's the property owners, the McLaughlins are building a new primary residence. We don't need the words own the prop, own the property.
Okay.
But could be on somebody else's property too. They do own the property.
It says they own it. The property owners, the McLaughlins are building.
Yeah, we just take out own the property and, and the apostrophe, Bill. Anything else, Norm?
Yeah, and Mary Beth, uh, next to the last paragraph, it says through the school called Four Winds. Should that be a capital W?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and next, right at the bottom, the, the last sentence, this would need to be a new plat or a new amended plat?
Uh, it's a new plat.
New plat, okay. I have nothing else. Thank you for.
Over to you, Jerry.
Make a motion. We uh, choose a minute says amended.
Your second?
Second.
There's no motion. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 No abstain.
And Andy abstains. Okay, anything else? For the good of the order.
That's enough.
Go on, once, twice.
Yeah. When, when's the next meeting, please?
The next meeting is the, the uh eighteenth, right? Okay, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Okay, Jerry, Jerry moved. Seconded by him. We need this adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.